I think 12 is a high number compared to what we've had. Or at least it's, it's not a minimal number. It's higher than a lot of meetings. And I, I think if we wait till Monday, there's no guarantee that we'll have more than 12. So I'd say vote today. But I, I want, had a question in case that's in a disagreement and people hope we can get 15. Can we vote virtually? If we have a meeting Monday at a particular place?
Yeah, I think we'd be able to.
I, I'm not, I'm automatically not capable of coming Monday.
That's right. And I think when Jeff was on last that we could, you know, designate, you know, like the proxy and all of that kind of stuff as long as the, my understanding was as long as these meetings, the open meeting and slot stuff from COVID had been extended, we could continue to do that hybrid kind of thing. Um, as long, as long as it got extended. So I think we should be able to still kind of like designate like a proxy vote kind of thing. Was my understanding. So we could do that. Um. So Maritza and then Tony.
I, I agree with Babat. I think that, um, I was gonna ask like who's missing from today's conversation? And, you know, I think everybody should have input into that final map. And I agree that we could do it by proxy. I don't think that that's an issue. So if somebody can't show up, we can certainly have their vote be counted, uh, one way or the other on Monday.
Tony and then me.
Thank you. Uh, so while I love you all, I will be unavailable next week as my mother, my sister and my brother-in-law are arriving from Orlando, staying with me. So I will not be available to attend any kind of meeting. If you're asking me for a vote, I can let you know what my vote would be.
Right. Um, John also will comment in the chat about like maybe like a partial vote today. Um, I'm not sure if we can maybe do something like that. Maybe that would be a Gerald or Marissa question. My, I just want to make a comment. I also would like, just like, ideally, I want 15 people here to vote and I'm happy to wait till Monday. My concern is, is that if someone's saying, oh, well, so-and-so has concerns or maybe we should look. Yes, I agree, but that's what today was about. Like if we're like thinking like we might be making changes or something like, to me, this vote is like a, a finalization. And so if we're continuing to play around with maps on Monday and maybe not even vote, like that is, that, that's a concern. Today, like this week was when we were going to be talking about changes and we had a discussion about that. So I'm just concerned about our, our timeline. I mean, I'm happy to wait, but I want to be mindful of what we're up against and our limitations with what Josh's availability, everything. So that's where I'm at. Um, Bruce, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you on that. I don't know if there's a, uh, people can make a vote on a map that might be changed Monday. That doesn't make, and I'm wondering whether it's just possible in order to get to that magic 15, for us to vote in a two-day process. Um, and, and count whatever votes we've got here. And then, uh, I count others that, uh, we might be able to get on Zoom or at the meeting, um, that, that Monday. So we end up with 15 because I think that, uh, um, I agree if we could do it, a unanimous a vote would be significant. It would be a good public statement.
Jerry, can you speak to this at all? Whether it's like kind of like split voting or, you know, how this all can work?
It's a little problematic. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Little problematic to split the vote because the people in the second cohort know what happened in the first cohort. So if, if they, if, we talk about genuine voting and strategic voting. Without normative weight on those words, you know, not condemning one or the other. Strategic voting is to affect the outcome, but might not be the preferred outcome if you vote. That's my dog. That's what I've been, well, he's a new puppy. He loves barking. We're working on it. So forgive me very much for that.
What's its vote?
So I would not, I would not, uh, if you're not doing a secret ballot at this juncture, I would not recommend voting in two stages. I think it invites a little mischief.
So if we, if we have certain members do like a proxy vote, like Tony and Larry who cannot be available on Monday. So like we already know, then like then we would have at best 13 of us. And so it still wouldn't be everyone. Um, how does that work, Jerry? Like, do they just like send their votes to Jihan or they designate like someone and send their choice to that person?
You can specify it. Say, Jerry will receive the proxies. They have to be in his, in his hands by this time and date. And they will be counted at the meeting. And you indicate it will be counted, that we counted simultaneously with the other votes. So you have to specify so people know how their proxy, how their proxy would be, would be used. I, I just wanted to note that if you have a super majority requirement of three, I heard three quarters. Is that right?
Yes.
Then you'll have, you'll have to have nine votes to get three quarters. Nine votes is, uh, 60% of 100 and of, of 15. So it's still a, a large majority relative to the whole number. I don't know if that makes any difference to you, but it's a, a thought. And I have no specific recommendation on, on, uh, legitimacy, you know, upset by somebody who wanted to be heard. Couldn't be president at, at a vote. Because these arguments are always heard and they're equally valid, whatever kind of organization it is, you know, somebody will feel exclusive. Others will argue that if they knew what was gonna, knew what was gonna be discussed, so they should have showed up. And they will say, well, I couldn't because my family was pregnant or some other legitimate reason. So you can't get over past that. That's all, that's gonna be a present concern in circumstances like this in general.
Larry, go ahead.
So I'm in favor of Josh's Plan C, voting for it. Whether I vote for it now or I don't know how to do a proxy, do I? Can I just tell Jihan that's what my vote is? You can decide if it's today or Monday.
I would not, I would not recommend that. I would recommend that everybody know what it required to answer the proxy.
I'm sorry, not hearing you. Everybody?
Everybody should know how to do it. Should not be at risk of being condemned for not being, giving Joe or Jim or Jane a favor by letting them vote in a different way than other people. So if you establish a proxy process, which is not a big deal. And then everybody has that option and it's completely, from my ethnic perspective, a potion. But it's not, it's not, uh, at risk of being condemned for favor. But I wouldn't do it informally. Uh, I'm very, very hesitant to informal arrangements, especially after the investment you've made and the outcome you've produced. You may not, I'm sure you all know that you're a model for the state in the eyes of some of the key people in New York who are upset with the New York State process. You've done an extraordinary job.
Tony?
I make a motion that the commission develop a proxy for Monday afternoon's meeting.
Proxy policy?
Proxy process.
Process. Charles, seconds. Um, okay, discussion. Um, I think that that's wise then, even if some people, other people can't come, um, they can use that option. Um, would we have people send votes to Jihan? I don't, because she's not a voting member, but, um.
Typically, the way that a proxy would work is that the person who is assigning a proxy would write, basically a statement saying they're unequaled to attend the meeting and in their absence, they are assigning their proxy to another member. And that member would then vote for them. And so you have a signed piece of paper that, that, uh, is, is official, them turning over the proxy for their vote. Typically, that person will tell the person who they are giving the proxy to how they want to vote. And then the, that person would then be responsible for, uh, their proxy vote. In my experience, a proxy has not, however, uh, required that the person who receives the proxy vote in the way that the person that told them to. I mean, clearly, it's not a great practice to, to do the opposite and that I've never seen that happen. But technically, in the organizations that I've been involved in that allowed for proxy voting, it has been technically possible that a person who gives, you give their proxy to would vote in a way that you don't agree with. Uh, because your, your, the proxy isn't them passing the vote along, it's giving them the right to vote for you. So, you know, eh, the, in my experience, when I've given a person a proxy or I've received a proxy, it's always just been somebody I would trust would vote the way that I, you know, had, had asked them to.
So maybe the, the process, the proxy process then, what I'm hearing is that, um, we would talk amongst ourselves. If you want to use that proxy process, you have to make this statement and you talk to someone who you trust, make that documented, um, and then that person just votes on your behalf. John, Maritza, Babat, Larry?
I'm, I'm wondering, um, could we, the, the members that are here today all just email Jihan our vote? And she keeps it to herself over the weekend? And then we see who shows up on Monday, whether they show up with a proxy voting for them or not. We'll send an email out to the, the people who are not here saying you have to vote Monday, whether you assign one of the members to be a proxy vote for you or, or you show up in person. And then if they come, they would cast their votes and then Jihan would be there to open the rest of our votes. And that way it's a secret ballot. More or less, I trust Jihan to not, you know, tell me and Molly how people voted because all we have to do is ask her and she won't do that. And I, I think that that way we could get the best of both worlds. We could all vote today and lock in our votes. And we can give the opportunity. If, if the people don't show up and they don't assign a proxy, then that's on them. But we gave them the opportunity. That's, that's what I'm shooting for here. So that's, that's my suggestion. I don't know if it's legal or possible, but let's try it.
Uh, Maritza, Babat, then Larry.
What the GSNA does when we have these types of situations where we'd like to get everybody to vote is, um, to send out an email stating, you know, we are going to take this vote. And we plan on, you know, give people the weekend. We're going to tally up the votes on Monday, but send everybody an email and have them respond to just Jihan with whether they go for the map or against the map. And then she can collate all of those answers. And I think we stand a better chance of getting people in that may not be able to come to the meeting. But if we do it via email and send the response only to Jihan, that way none of us knows, you know, which way this is gonna go until whatever we set the deadline. And if the deadline will be set by the meeting on Monday, then we should have all 15 votes by Monday. Just a suggestion.
Babat?
I, I was, I agree with Maritza. It's like, instead of calling it voting by proxy, just call it a secret ballot. Maybe we just send out like a Google form or something that only Jihan can see. Nobody else sees it. You just vote yea or nay with your name. She collates it and then everybody has by Monday to get that vote in over the weekend. So it gives you a chance to go back and relook at the maps, think about this conversation. For those folks, um, who didn't join today can actually go back and look at this video. Look at this meeting. And then, but you know, by five o'clock on Monday, you have to, you know, return your, your vote, your, your, your secret ballot to Jihan.
Larry? Oh, hold on, you're on mute.
I'm comfortable with those last two statements. My, actually I had my hand raised in case we went a different way, more with Tony's, Tony's proposition and proxy. I was wondering, is there anything different about Monday's meeting, about being able to vote on WebEx then right now?
No, we were just hoping to have more people.
But I understand. Tony can't be there at all, but I can attend on WebEx. So I wondered if I could vote on Monday if we went that way. But the secret ballot sounds better.
Okay. Jackie, your hand is up and welcome.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, these days are bad for me. I'm running a food pantry over here. So, um, what I was gonna say is that I've looked at the map, I've taken, I've, I've made notes on it, all of that. Is that something that has already been done insofar as people, um, having concerns on the particular map?
We did have a conversation earlier, um, this meeting about just some of the issues and, you know, about content of the map. Right now, we're discussing the process for how we'd like to vote on the map.
Okay, I'd like to weigh in on the map itself because voting on something and there's still things that are specifically not put in the map. I have a question and I have a concern.
Okay, so let's put a pin at that. Um, we have, we have a motion on the table for a proxy process. We've had our discussion. Um, I don't know, Tony, if you wanted to amend your motion at all to just a voting process via secret ballot Google form to Jihan, or if you want to stick with your proxy, um, process.
Yeah, I would say let's stick with it, vote on it, put it down and then motion for a different process.
Okay, so we are voting currently on establishing a proxy process. All in favor of having a proxy process, say aye. Uh, one, John? Okay, I'll oppose. I. Okay. All right. Uh, motion fails. Um, is there any other motion for any other voting process?
Maritza, do you want to, or me?
Babat, you go right ahead and I'll second it.
Okay. Um, I motion that we vote by secret ballot. Um, sometime between now and, um, five o'clock Monday afternoon. Um, both will go to Jihan and then she will reveal the, um, oh, sorry. Um, she will reveal the results of the vote. Um, and I, let me, okay, back up, let me stop, let me take, let me stop. Are we gonna meet in person on Monday or we're just gonna meet virtually on Monday to learn the results of the vote?
TBD, um.
Okay. And then, then how we will meet on Monday is to be determined. So let me, let me rephrase. I make a motion that we, we do a secret ballot vote um, that has to be sent to Jihan between now and Monday by five o'clock. And our meeting, um, on Monday will be determined whether it will be virtual or in person.
That's actually two separate motions.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. So Maritza, how is, because I, because we're gonna reveal the results at the meeting on Monday. I just didn't know how we're gonna reveal the meeting minute, how we're gonna reveal the vote. Whether we're gonna do it in person because we don't know how, what we're doing on Monday yet.
Babat, can you give us access to that room that we've been using?
I, I, I'll text, um, Sheena right now. I think we can do that.
It will be an in-person meeting. Okay. Uh, but with a WebEx component.
So that decision has been made. So the only thing Babat, that you need to move on is that we do it by secret ballot to, um, get to Jihan.
Yes. So I make the motion that we vote by secret ballot no later than four o'clock on Monday. And, and the ballots go to Jihan.
Okay. And Maritza, do you want a second thought?
Yes, I do.
Okay, discussion. Anyone have anything to discuss?
I don't know what a secret ballot is. What does that even mean? And how does it get from us to Jihan? Is there some kind of web portion? Do you just check and then send it?
Jihan's gonna make a Google form, um, that's, um, that will be sent only to her. No one else will know. So no one can be influenced by someone else's vote or like what the count currently is. None of us will know. And so it will be, um, a Google form that will go out to you. I think, that's what I, I think that's the easiest way to go about this and to make it private. Larry?
Well, I hate to bring this up. But I have a hard time voting by secret ballot if I don't know what Jackie's concerns are. Even though it's late, if, if, if we, if we have to have it in by four o'clock and the meeting's at five and we don't let her talk today. And I'm not sure that, that it's fair to, to vote. I listen to other people's opinions and I still go ahead with the CD maps, but I'd like to hear, I don't know when, but I'd like to hear from Jackie.
And I, the motion does not exclude her from sharing her concerns with us. It was just outlining the process.
I understand. I'm saying, but it's hard. If she doesn't get a chance to talk today, I don't know how, I'd have trouble voting for this motion. Because how would I be able to know what her opinion is by four o'clock on Monday?
My, my intention is absolutely to have Jackie speak at the end of this vote, but, um, we can table the vote and, and go back to map talking if we need.
Well, if that's the process, I'd be comfortable with voting for this proposition.
Jackie's still gonna have a voice, um, in this meeting. I'm not getting off until I, you know, hear what she has to say. So that's fine.
I'd like to table that vote until I have to have my say because certainly it's pertinent to this map.
Okay, go ahead, Jackie.
Appreciated. So that, um, for the purposes of consistent voting blocks, 1207 Almond Street was specifically cut out. Jamesville, which is considered Carriage House Apartments, also gone. And that's from District Four, that A, call it whatever you want at this point. And so what was the reasoning behind that?
Are you speaking, um, the, the?
So that would be, that message is to Josh. So Toomey Abbott, 1207 Almond Street. It's called, it's Toomey Abbott's, um, Second Tower or whatever they call it now. And then Carriage House Apartments on Jamesville Street or Avenue. I enlarged it. I see that it's not there. It's cut to the other district. Is there a particular reason why, when that has been a consistent voting block, at least in this district?
Jackie, do you have, do you have any cross streets? I'm trying to find where you're talking about.
1207 Almond, I think, take you off my.
Was that the section of outer Comstock?
So the Toomey Abbott is between East Taylor and Van Burn?
1207 Almond Street. That's the specific address. It's on Almond Street, right? It is, because Toomey Abbott has some kind of annex or something that goes with it. If I'm not mistaken, but it's that, I know it's that address because when I opened it, I was specifically making note of people's housings that they wanted to keep intact. So Carriage House Apartments would be Jamesville Ave and then 1207. I can look up this cross street because I wrote down that seeing it off of there. And you don't have numbers to build in.
Josh, you see where the Syracuse VA Hospital Medical Center is? Right next to the highway?
Oh, yeah. It's just south of a little bit, uh,
Yes, that little bit.
That goes east of the highway. So.
Just south of the little bit that goes east of the highway. So.
The apartment right below that.
Near the top of District A, it cuts out a little triangle to the right.
Right, top of District A. Little triangle to the right. Oh, okay. So that, um, yay. Okay, yeah, yeah. The other side of Renwick Ave there?
It's between Taylor and Van Buren Street.
Van Buren. Okay, I got Van Buren here. Hang on, let me look it for Taylor.
And Taylor's above.
Taylor's above. All right.
VA Hospital.
Okay, yeah. So let me just go ahead and share my screen for a second. And I'll flip back over there. Oop, wrong one. Here we are. Okay, so this portion right here is the little bump out that's included in District A. And I believe the area we're talking about is right down here. And so let's see. Part of it is because of the shape of this census block, although it's only 32 people. I don't know that there was a specific reason as to why that wasn't also included except for there was.
Brought up before.
Yeah, it hadn't been brought up and, and initially I-81 was like, was, uh, was the dividing line. And then there were a couple of places that bumped out. I'm looking at, it looks like there's 910 people there. 880 are in this block here, which I believe is where that apartment building is. And then 32 are just kind of scattered in there.
It was brought up in previous, um, of David Rufus from ACLU. Also works with 81 and all of that, which is why his concern was don't make that the dividing line. He specifically said, if you were taking notes to Toomey Abbott, Carriage House Apartments. And the other one that was put back in, um, now I'm looking at the note, um, but there was a three for, um, specifically because of the voting blocks. I mean, we do hear all the forms of voter registration. So where, where are those? But when he named the housings, that's when I made, took notice because those are consistent historical voting blocks.
John, can you speak to this a little bit? Because we did take his direct suggestions. That's part of the change that we made. John, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, Carriage House Apartments are, um, on the north side of Calvin Street across from Moore Ave. I've, I've been there as recently as a couple of years ago and it's, it's mostly, to my recollection, it's mostly students and old people. It's not, it's, it's a very small apartment complex and I, I truly thought it was more important to get the people who live on Benedict and Berwin and Moore and Ida Benderson and Rony Lane and Smith, the Smith Road there. That, Josh can check the population, but I don't think Carriage House is predominantly African-American.
It is, it is. Carriage House and Toomey Abbott.
As far as Toomey Abbott goes, um, it's, it's surrounded by SU dorms and University Hospital. It's, it is what it is. I mean, we can, we can probably put it in. It's, it's 800 people or 1,000 people. Um, I don't have a problem including it because it is, it is part of Syracuse Housing Authority. And it is a significant number of people and they are the majority African-American. So, um, it's probably just more oversight than anything because we did include Frisbee. It's probably just more oversight than anything because we did include Frisbee Court and White Court and all those courts that are on Eastern Eight, Eastern eighty one. So. It's a numbers game. I mean, where do we find a thousand people to take from another district to include Toomey Abbott? Is it important?
I wish I don't don't overlook. Don't do not do that. But it's Toomey Abbott and Carriage House. It's not either or. It is both. And we have blocking blocks of voting. We already have this underrepresentation. While we're not going to fix all the problems, the hope is that we don't do bad further damage. So we're moving either or when we I very well know personally that we go down there and we make sure that these folks get sold to the polls. You can't justify either one, in my opinion. Now, yeah, if you want to choose somewhere else to get it from, then that's different. Which is why my concern about having him come because of this. That's all I have.
Josh can Josh can look at the population of the Carriage House is not a huge apartment complex. And I don't have a problem leaving it in District E. It's more important to have those other those other developments in District A for my opinion. And Toomey Abbott should probably be included in District A. It's traditionally associated with Syracuse Housing and traditionally associated with District A.
And and Carriage House, if it's not, if it's so small, then what's the problem? You don't have a problem with it. I'm kind of lost on that. You're not representing District A, right? So you don't have a problem with it doesn't mean there's not a problem. So why can't Carriage House be also included? It's such a small denomination, as you say. I'm here to say that there are African Americans in there. I don't know where you're counting this at. Yeah, the students, they're transitional, but we can't throw out the baby and the bathwater. I'm interested in that Carriage House as well. And why, if not, why not?
Sorry about that. My computer tried to kill itself.
So Josh, did you catch all that that we're wanting to see if Toomey Abbott and Carriage House can both be placed in District A?
Yeah. I let me try and remote into my computer again because that's what ended up causing my computer to crash, but. So, hang on. Okay. All right. Are all those apartments in that in that same area? In that census block that had the eight hundred and eighty people?
Sorry, I didn't hear you. What was that?
Are all three of those apartments in that census block that had the eight hundred and eighty people? Or I'm trying to figure out exactly what the span that would have to be included is looking like, so I can.
Carriage House is on Jamesville. I'm trying to open up my map so I can tell you exactly. It's on Jamesville. Is that road or street? I put Jamesville.
It's Jamesville Avenue.
Avenue. So how far?
It's like Jamesville and Calvin.
Right, so it would go right above that.
Yeah.
Colvin is.
It's on the other side of Jamesville. So Jamesville is it's Calvin is the is the barrier between where the carriage apartments are. It's on the side of the cemetery. The Latter Day Saints Church.
Hang on, okay. I'm I'm having a hard time. I'm having a hard time remote controlling this computer. Just just give me one moment to try and figure, get my bearings here. Trying to find. Because. Oh. Okay. So Colvin and James Street?
James Street is the entrance of the little apartment.
Jamesville.
Jamesville.
Oh, okay, Jamesville Ave.
That census block is enormous. It's the whole cemetery.
South of what I was looking at.
Why am I not finding one?
You're outside. You can do what you want.
Okay, so hang on for one second. Let me just figure out. Where this? I see. Okay, so Jamesville and East Colvin. So, okay, um, from what I'm looking at here. That's like, that's about ninety six people. That that can be included without issue. Let me just let me just share this map and hopefully it doesn't crash the computer again. But I just I want to make sure that I've I've got the right section. Because if that's the case, then this is not going to be particularly difficult. So, okay, so what I'm gathering here is this right here is Colvin. This is Jamesville Ave. And so this right here would be the section in question, the census block with ninety six people?
No, no, it's it's north of north of Calvin. It's the census block with three hundred people in it.
Oh.
Because it includes.
It's just this big census block right here, the three hundred and twenty three people.
Which is mostly cemetery, but does include this apartment complex.
Carriage House, yeah.
Okay. Let me just grab a pen. I don't actually, I don't think that that's going to be. Okay, so that means I'm probably going to grab, need to grab. That might actually, the math on that actually might work out without any other changes if it's just that census block. And and probably these probably these other two, right?
Then the Toomey Abbott. That has the eight hundred people.
Oh, that other one, yeah. Okay.
Wouldn't it still be within because it would be your number fifteen hundred?
Yeah, no, we're we I would definitely need to swap some things to make that work.
We would be moving twelve hundred people from one district to the other. And they were basically balanced before, so now one is down twelve hundred. Jackie, I'm talking. Now we are down twelve hundred and one and up twelve hundred in the other. That's twenty four hundred. That's much more than our allowed tolerance.
And now that you're done talking, these two blocks are very important voting blocks, so they're more than just numbers to me and and to others. Not just to me, but since I'm the one on the call. So that being said, Josh, surely if you can look at something else, because people are there and they were making comments, and somehow those comments might have been overlooked because there was certainly talk about this more than once, Carriage House, Toomey Abbott, and the other one that you put back in. The other apartment complex then escapes me. So.
Jackie, were these in? Were these in District A and Plan B?
They they were in District A, from my recollection. I mean, I'm overwhelmed with this map, so I have this one. Were they?
No.
All right, then that's why it might have been why people were making the comments on them, but they were certainly made during the meeting. The last meeting, Southwest Community Center, which I was on Zoom, and the previous two.
Right, I think the what we did was that we swapped the we did take, it sounds like we took half of the the comments where we took the bigger population from what we did change and put that in there, but we did not move over Toomey and Carriage House. That's why the whole bottom part looks different so that we could take in that that feedback that we got from Mr. Rufus, and we put it in District A like he asked, but I didn't I didn't hear Carriage House and Toomey, but I'm sure he said it, but we did take his input into consideration. That's what John emailed Josh about last minute. So that that could be included. Charles, go ahead.
I mean. So I agree with Jackie about Toomey Abbott. I mean, I don't I don't know anything about Carriage House, but my question then is. Obviously, is the question, and I posed this to Jackie and the others on the South Side. If we include Toomey Abbott, what do you take out of that district? What would you suggest you take out of that district?
I'm looking at. I'm going to go down as far as.
Also recognize.
One set.
Depending on what you take out, then it changes the socioeconomic balance. And I think that that was one of the things that we were trying to focus on, that there was as there was kind of a balance between higher socioeconomic and lower socioeconomic. So if, for example, you take some, you take you take some folks out of the valley, and that throws that balance off.
Okay, how many are in Nob Hill? What about Nob Hill? Nob Hill is part of District A. Can you cut that? How many are there?
I thought we.
Nob Hill was already cut out of District A.
I thought that's one of them.
We took Nob Hill out to put in those other districts that were were asked to put in.
Why am I seeing Nob Hill? Okay.
Jackie, it was it was in it was in Plan B. But after we made those revisions, it was moved out of District A.
Okay, Smith Ave. Smith Ave, do you see where that's at? That's an apartment complex there too. Smith Ave. Which is more like up in that college housing area.
That is in the new map, Jackie.
I'm looking at the new map. Okay, is Smith Ave on the new map? Because that's what I'm seeing. I don't know going up the hill on Brighton.
You mean on Calvin, Smith Benedict Moore, Smith Lane Benedict Moore?
Smith Lane. What did I say? Smith Ave, sorry. Smith Lane.
Yeah, we that's in that's in the South Side now. David mentioned that at the meeting, and so that's in the South Side now. Or I'm sorry, A. Sorry, guys, A.
South Side is fine with me. He mentioned Smith. That's a housing over there in Smith. I didn't make that note when you mentioned that. And and that housing that's there on Smith Lane.
That's already included in A.
Is what if what if what if you took that out? Because that's problematic. So that's only one housing, is that right? The one that's owned by.
Well, we talked about that before you came on, and that has more African Americans than. Are you so? I'm sorry, I had to step away to catch up, talk to my dad real quick. Are you talking about taking that out and then adding in Carriage House?
Well, it's not just Carriage House. He's saying the combination of Carriage House and Toomey Abbott. A more of a voting block, much stronger than Smith than than that housing on Smith Lane, for sure. I can't think of the housing name, but it's whatever. They're owned by.
What, St. James?
St. James, yes, thank you. They're owned by. But would that would that balance it if that was taken out? Because you're dealing with Toomey Abbott and Carriage House, strong voting block versus Smith Lane, who, yeah, concentration of African American, but the socioeconomic doesn't put a dent in anything, that substantial dent.
So you're suggesting that you that you trade African American housing complexes?
If you must. I mean, I'm wondering how many are in there because I know it's large, but I didn't hear the numbers. Josh, would you have the numbers or would anybody have the numbers? Since you're looking at.
Give me a second so I can remote in again and try and look. I can't share my screen from my office computer because that keeps crashing my computer every time I try to. But let me let me log in and let me I can get you some numbers. That might it might actually be a pretty close trip.
So Josh, while you're doing that, Molly and everyone, we differ is available for us on Monday if we need it.
Okay. Five thirty meeting time? Yeah. Okay. So I can put it in my calendar.
So Jackie, I don't know. I don't know if you you weren't at the at the meeting at Southwest. I don't know if you heard us, but David. David Rufus actually asked the what you're asking to be taken out to be put in.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. I was taking notes at that meeting. That's where I must have missed that part because I was on I was on Zoom.
Yeah, he he specifically asked for more Benedict Smith Lane to be included because they were not originally included in the map. And I'm I'm probably, oh, we're being recorded, so I probably shouldn't say that out loud. So I I'm just gonna say.
Yeah, no.
I was in an I eighty one meeting this morning, and so I can tell you that these changes are going to be happening a little sooner than people think. Okay.
You know, Toomey Abbott, a private home, folks together all the time.
Okay. No, I'm on that eighty one committee, at least for the night crew. So no, the housing part won't go in as quickly as anybody thinks because that fifty million dollars that was asked for was was rejected. Surely the demolition is going to start, that's for sure, but they're two different things. So I think they the messaging is confusing, for sure. But it's Smith Lane, getting back to that, I found my notes and he he was saying either or if because such a strong voting block is with Toomey Abbott and Carriage House is what I've written, that Smith Lane. If there was an either or, then Smith Lane could possibly be the one to go.
No, he, no, originally, Smith Lane was not in there. He asked for it to be put in. Smith Lane Benedict and Moore.
What I'm saying is if he said either or, if it had to be an either or because they were saying that there was a formula, I thought it was fifteen hundred, at least that's what I wrote. But if there was a formula such as that, that's what I'm saying. If he said there was a choice, then voting block wise and because of the historical value, it would be Toomey Abbott and that Carriage House, and there was another one, B, the one with the B Benning Bennington apartment. And Smith Lane would be the trade off if there was a choice. That's all. I mean, I wrote notes and then put question marks next to it, but.
Okay, that's not what my notes say. Maybe we might need to go back and look at the footage over the weekend, but that's not what.
We should because I I mean, I don't know if you know about that voting block at Smith Lane. I mean, we go there and.
I am a I am a South Side girl, Jackie. Grew up on Ballard Ave and live on Kirk right now.
But as far as registering people and getting them out to vote, we get the numbers from the Board of Elections. That's what I'm all I'm saying. I mean, I didn't grow up here, but I'm deeply involved in that part.
We should we should probably be a little bit easy on the conversation about registered voting voters and.
Okay, okay.
Things because of the prohibition. I mean, just.
No, that's, that's a taken, that's a given, that's a given. I mean, just being in the streets, go ahead.
No, no, I get it, I get it. I'm just, you know, due diligence and all. I, I looked at the numbers. If the commission desires to make that swap, I can make those numbers work.
So let's just, can we clarify what that swap would be, please? Just so we're all on the same page about it.
So essentially, the portion. To the east of I eighty-one that is included in, that was swapped in, in Plan C. With the southern portion of the, or the um, the South Valley on the, on the east side of the highway there. So it's like basically between um, East Colvin Street. And it looks like Thurber Street, and then there's a little section that goes down south, just because that's the shape of the census block. So, and the place that I'd be swapping would be the very large cemetery block with three hundred twenty-three people. Also, the two blocks, you know, that kind of are, would be made almost an island out of that. Um, and then essentially what I would do is just take uh, East Adams Street. To Irving Ave, to Van Buren Street. Uh, so that little dire court um, area that's included in, in that, I would just expand that to like the sort of larger block around it. And the numbers on that should work out pretty well. It's gonna, the, the three hundred twenty-three block is gonna look a little bit odd. Because it's just gonna, gonna kind of bump out there, but there's, there's nothing that can really be done about that.
So that means that you're gonna include the VA Hospital?
Have to, yeah, it's all in one block.
And it, and it runs to university?
Yeah. Yeah, that block is huge. That block is huge. It runs from I eighty-one all the way over to Comstock. Yeah, so I'd, I'd make Comstock Ave between basically um. That's just a little teeny tiny street. I'm trying to see where the, there's no street uh. At there. The southern one, southern end would be East Colvin and Comstock. And the northern end of that block is um. It doesn't, it doesn't really have a street. It's like halfway between Broad Street and Stratford Street.
That means that we'll be incorporating the whole academic part of the university.
With the south side, yes.
Not have the university in with the university section?
It's a, it's a big move for a small apartment complex.
That would also mean that all of um, E S F dorms are included in that as well.
Yeah.
So why don't we, Jackie, why don't you make a motion and then we, we'll just vote on it?
Um, before I make that motion, is that, why does that have to be such a large swap? That's why I'm, you know, you're.
It's like a census blocks, remember?
The census block is huge. It runs from I eighty-one all the way over to Comstock because of the cemetery. Or actually, no, that might not be the cemetery area, because of the university, I believe.
And that puts in Toomey Ave, that puts in Carriage House, then you have to, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're able to balance it. Then you would bring back the, I mean.
Or no, wait, 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 wait. It would be, it's not the university, it's the cemetery. And let me look at the other side. The, the other section that would be expanded. Let me flip back. So it would be, oh, come on.
I see now. It would be up to the southern edge of the university. Campus Drive.
Yeah, it would be up to the southern edge of the university and the other, the, on the other end, it would be, I believe it would be the medical center that it includes. Let me just double check that. Yeah, it would be, or it would be Upstate University Hospital would be included. Uh, in that, in that district, as well as the, the VA Medical Center.
Does that also include the SUNY ESF dorms? They sit adjacent to the cemetery.
Are they north of the cemetery?
Yes.
No. West Campus Drive, which is the northern end of the cemetery, is the, is the boundary for that census block. So it looks like it would just be Oakwood Cemetery. And the apartment south of it.
The question is Toomey Abbott. When you put Toomey Abbott in with the south side, what does that boundary of that census block look like? That's the issue. Because, I mean, Toomey Abbott is really the, 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 the numbers game. That's eight hundred people.
Yeah, so it looks like Toomey Abbott. That census block. So I need to make it contiguous. I can exclude the hospitals because there's only thirty-two people living there. That's not a big deal. Um, so it would just be, and there's the two census blocks next to it are zero. So it's looking to me like I can just include. Wait, that's Van Buren. Let me just, let me just double check. Yes. So I should be able to just include the census block that the um, that Toomey Abbott is in there. And I can actually exclude the hospitals from that without, without an issue. And then the largest, larger one is just including Oakwood Cemetery in with the south side because the uh, the apartment building is in the same census block as it.
So, so just for my little pea brain, if you include Toomey Abbott, because I, I can't see the census block.
Yeah.
Van Buren, that runs from Van Buren to what? What's the north parameter of that?
It looks like Gauge Court.
Does that include the two giant SU dorms? That are attached to Toomey Abbott, kind of? And their dining hall?
Brockway Hall, Brewster Hall.
That's it.
Yeah, I believe it would include that as well, yeah. Yeah, it looks like it would be Brewster Hall, Brockway Hall, the Erie and Rich Housing Program, which I believe is the Toomey Apartments. And it would stop before the uh, before the SU Medical Center, or the VA Medical Center, rather, sorry.
That will keep us, if you just do those two switches, that will keep us within the five percent.
I think it will, yes. Um, I may have to, I may have to pick up. Um, another couple of census blocks. I'm not one hundred percent on that. But I think, I, I can, I just, I know that I can make the numbers work.
And that's also cutting out that section we just put in.
Yes. Yeah, it's swapping that section for the other two.
So now here's my question, seeing how this is the last, this is the last, this, this is it. How do we defend that? How do we defend swapping one black community for another black community?
Yeah, and you're not about, and you're not allowed to use voting blocks or voter registration as a reason.
Okay, then we can use another thing. This, this is a um. Well, should be a fact. There's also a transient area on that Smith Lane. Those are um. Mostly held by apartment dwellers there because I'm going there to serve food. Are most, are held in large part by people, not all, but are people who are on probation. So when they're let out. They have a understanding with this, who owns that Skytop, the, the owners of Sky Greenfield. And they're on a list that allows them to be transient, meaning that as long as they're doing right on probation, they can be there because that gives them some housing. Do they stay more than a year? The leases don't run longer than six months or seven for that particular block, not the entire Smith Lane. But because of that housing, that is on their probation block. So transient, much like the SU people. So how do you, is that something that is allowable to say? Certainly on a list.
The other, the other thing that I need to look at is what that swap does. To the African American percentage in District A. Because. That eight hundred and eighty. Section, that eight hundred and eighty census block, there are five hundred and eighty-seven. Non Hispanic. Oh, wait, let me go to the voting age. There are five hundred and eighty-four non Hispanic white persons of voting age. And there are a hundred and eighty-one black persons of voted. Voting age. And then that three hundred and twenty-three block. It's a hundred and fifty-nine to seventy-seven. So. And the, all of the blocks that are included in the area that a, that we had swapped for the District C. Are much more heavily African American, like the ten eighty one here is. Uh, two hundred and forty-three white and four hundred and sixteen black. I, I mean, I think it'll work out and I don't think it's gonna bring it below fifty percent, but it is gonna lower that number. A, it's, it's up to the commission whether they want to, whether you guys want to do that or not. I, I think I can make the numbers work.
But we were, so when, but the original, we were only at like fifty-four percent anyway, correct? And so this might lower it down to like fifty-two or fifty-one?
Yeah, something like that. I'd have to, I'd have to make the swap to, to see what the exact uh, numbers will be, but yeah.
These, these changes to uh, Plan C. Will they also have us defend why some of SU's community is, has now been moved? Or have we misinterpreted what's going on? And early on, I said, we've got to figure out what the pushback's going to be, even if we don't have interaction. And uh, and that might be a pushback.
I, I don't know, is Molly, Molly and John still on? If, if that, if that swap lowers. We're, we're already at a very thin. Razor around majority minority district anyway with fifty-four percent. I am not for shifting any numbers that's gonna take us lower than fifty-four. We're, we're already like, we're four percent over that fifty percent. I would not want to push that any lower than that.
I personally agree. Graham, um, go ahead.
I was just gonna say exactly what that said.
And even with that fifty-four percent, and we don't, we could say we're from the voting block part, but again, that's a transient area, so. It, it's may or may not be fifty-four percent. According to the census block, so. Um, would you upset a very unique block that we know has a lot in common? Would you upset that for this transient area? I'm in favor of it.
Came on the call um. Because we have been looking at that, so we went through the numbers and. Um, it's not as transient as you say. It's a lot more, there are a lot of single family homes up in that area, so. We, we know just the numbers and it's. But Jackie, why don't you make a motion to make the swap? And that's like the easiest way to do this, I knew we could just vote.
Oh, sure, sure. I make a motion to make the swap. Of the most recent one George just talked about. For the one that's in. That's on the, for the one that's on the table now. And in faith, in exchange for the one that has been already put onto the uh. Already put onto the map as we see it. Does that make sense? Because I'm trying, there's some background noise, I'm trying to. But um.
Sorry.
I make a motion to accept what Josh has just um. Has just identified now creating the Toomey Abbott slash Carriage House. Sector and in exchange for Smith Lane. Area. That makes sense.
Any one second?
Second.
Cheryl, seconds. Discussion. We've been discussing this. Swapping one black neighborhood for another. Okay, all in favor of this motion, please, um, either just to break, if your camera is not on, put your little hand up so we can count. Jihan is not on, so. All in favor? Okay, um, any opposed? Okay, motion does not pass. That being said, if we're not making that swap, um, then Draft C would still stand as it is. And that's what we would be voting on um, for Monday. We have that tabled motion about the, the Google Form secret ballot vote. Let's go back to that because we had tabled it. Um, so this was Babat's motion to have a secret ballot form. That goes to Jihan to vote on Draft C by Monday. Um, we've already had our discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Jason, you're opposed? And Jackie, your hand has remained up.
Um, yeah, yeah, I'm in favor of the, the ballot.
Okay, alright. Motion passes. So we will have Jihan send out um. A Google Form for voting. We will meet um, Monday. At five thirty. Where we have been meeting at. Sorry, um, we will meet um, Monday at the one hundred Clinton.
Okay. Okay, good. Um, I, can I make a motion at this meeting in so I can go actually do some work and pay my bills?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Goodbye.
Have a good weekend, folks.